For joining us, everyone, tonight. This is the February 12th, 2024, meeting of the Lunenburg Planning Board. We're starting at 6:10 PM rather than the scheduled 6 o'clock just due to a few technical issues that have been deftly addressed. We have present tonight myself and Mr. Allison physically at Town Hall as well as Ms. Reed and Mr. Willsmer present on Zoom. Ms. Reed, could you just get a hello or something from you, just so we know your audio's working?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Great. So that is, I should remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded, being shown on Facebook and public access TV. We are meeting here at Town Hall. You're welcome to come down and join us. The meeting is also available on Zoom, as we've just discussed. Great. Thank you for joining us. And we have an agenda with not many technical issues, formal things to deal with, but a good amount of discussion. So start after calling to order, we'll dive right in to see if there's any public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on to our first topic, an A and R for 1387 Massachusetts Avenue.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Conover. I'm from David Ross Associates, and I represent Kyle Blood and Jamie Merrill Blood for property located on Massachusetts Avenue. Is our intention tonight to get an approval, not required, plan endorsed by the planning board. We were addressed by or instructed by the land use director to combine the two parcels, as it currently is in the deed, into one lot. The lot as shown on the plan has in excess of 44,000 square feet. It's got 236 feet and change along Massachusetts Avenue as an existing structure on the property. As I said, the current deed describes two parcels in the deed. I call them parcels, but they're actually separate descriptions. They're all in one deed, but it was his intention or his request to combine those to one lot. And that's what the plan as presented shows.
Thank you very much for that. Just giving everything a quick look over here. I'm sure other board members are as well. Just since we're going up in size rather than down, shouldn't matter, but I'm just curious, what is the, do we know the lot requirement, what zone this is?
Yes, in RA, which you need 40,000 square feet and I think 175 feet of lot frontage.
So this makes it even, in fact, more conforming?
Correct, correct. And I think that's probably his ultimate intention, to have one conforming lot. Even though by statute, the deed describes two parcels, that's one lot in its entirety, but he wanted it shown on a plan. So obviously, we'll accommodate his request.
Okay. All right. I turn to the board to see if we have questions or what questions we might have. And for our board members, not, you know, not here, you could either, you can just, honestly, just interrupt, just unmute and interrupt. This isn't a high-stakes meeting right now, so. Questions from the board?
No, I don't have any questions. I like what I see in the documents we've been provided. I don't see any reason not to go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Willsmer. Mr. Allison, you had some thoughts?
Oh, I'm ready to make a motion. I just, when I initially looked at the plan, I didn't look at the application. I'm like, well, that's only 100 feet, that's, we need the 175. Went through the house and then I looked at the application, realized it was combination. I'm like, I have no, I have zero issue with this. I was also gonna mention the corner there with the driveway for the, for the school that backs up, but there's no need for that. This is, this is excellent, and there's no more conversation about it. I move that we not approve, but endorse the A and R.
I just, I think that'll be fine. I just want to ask Ms. Reed to make sure we're not missing anything. I don't know that we are, but.
No, I don't have any questions, and I'll second the motion.
Okay. Ben, could I get a formal motion on that, just to be 100% sure?
What was the address, 1375?
1387.
I move that we endorse the A and R for 1387 Mass Ave.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor. Votes have to be by roll call because we have some members participating via Zoom. Ms. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Willsmer?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
And an aye from myself. Excellent.
Well, thank you very much, and when the plan is endorsed by all the members, just let me know, okay, Annie?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
That's it. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you. You as well.
Does that need to be all members or three members?
Three.
Three? Okay. All right. Great. Wonderful. Gonna go back up to the agenda. And that was our A and R. Next up, our appointments. Master Plan Steering Committee Volunteer Application Review. We have received a volunteer application from Ms. Kimberly Duffy, who is here with us tonight, for, to join the Master Plan Steering Committee. We have that document in front of us, but Ms. Duffy, would you just like to come before us and say anything? This is low-key chill.
Televised on YouTube eternally.
And you should just say your name and address when you come up for the record.
Yes. Kim Duffy, 1479 Mass Ave. So I would like to join the Master Plan Steering Committee to help complete the new master plan, but also to bring a different perspective to the process and plan. You know, reflecting back on previous plans and how we are continuing to do that long-term, but also, you know, how we could be changing should be a part of this process that I'd like to lead if I could join the committee. Additionally, I'd like to encourage environmental sustainability in a line in any way that we can with the Green Communities Committee, as I am a member of that committee. I've also been attending the public meetings for the master plan and would like to contribute more than just attending. For example, you know, we all agree based on data that we want the town to be more rural and continue to have, you know, farmland and open spaces. But, you know, I want everyone to look at, think about what that looks like and, you know, what do we need to do to compromise, to achieve that? And like, what compromises we do need to make to achieve that as well? You know, I'm a very realistic person, and I wanted to bring that groundedness to the committee.
Wonderful. I know you've been on the Green Committee. I've seen you at the, I've seen you at other master planning functions as well, like the public info sessions. Banger. Questions, thoughts from members of the board?
I've seen you at a few meetings. Kimberly, I'm glad you took up Josie on her, kind of talking to you about, about joining. And I'm happy to have you on the board or on the committee.
Thank you.
Hearing no other questions.
So.
Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I'll also say that she's been a very active member of the community. She goes to the farmer's market regularly. I've seen her very active in the green communities, and I have seen her at the meetings for the Master Plan Steering Committee. And I'm sure of anything that Amanda might have to say, I'd move, make a motion for this, too.
Well, if we're gonna just sit here and extol Ms. Duffy's virtues, I'd also point out that not only is she present at these meetings, and not only is she participating publicly, but she's also frequently turning to me and saying, you know, and then with additional feedback, which is.
Exactly.
Absolutely wonderful. And if you want me to call you absolutely wonderful friends at home, please come to the master planning meetings. And you, too, can be called absolutely wonderful, or frankly, whatever else you want, if it gets your butt in those seats participating.
And he's actually called me that, so.
With, I would look for a motion regarding Ms. Duffy's application.
I move that we appoint Kim Duffy to the Master Plan Steering Committee.
Second.
And because I'm just kind of going longevity on the board, and that means I should go, Mr. Willsmer, before Ms. Reed, Mr. Willsner moved and seconded, Mr. Willsner?
Aye.
Ms. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Aye from myself. Welcome aboard, you foolish person. Thank you so much for your help.
I know, I keep joining committees. What's wrong with me?
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Please don't forget to see the clerk's office and get sworn in.
Yes, thank you for the reminder.
Oh, thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
As I'm going by time on the board, I just always put myself last, even though Mr. Allison's been here longer than me, because that's what I've seen every other chair do. All right. That would be our appointments.
And if you don't mind, I'll remind Ms. Duffy, there is absolutely no reason that we don't want you to stay for the rest of the meeting, but there also is no reason that you need to, so.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
We have, next up would be Certificate of Completion for 147 Holman and 159 Holman. You're looking at me, am I supposed to be presenting this? Because that would be unfortunate.
Yes. Um, yes.
So, being frank, and Mr. Allison, if I remember correctly, the board has traditionally not had, when we had a full-time land use director, I don't remember ever voting on these.
You want me to be frank, too?
Yeah?
I don't either.
Okay, cool. So that's fine.
We do need to release the bond, though.
Yes, no, I agree 100%, and it makes sense that it's here, having an interim land use director, as fantastic as Mr. Harris is. But is there a process for this? Is there something we're supposed to do? Are we just supposed to?
The bylaw specifies that before performance guarantee is released, the permanent grant authority, which is the planning board, must receive the final inspection report and must issue a certificate of completion, and then they may issue, then they may release the performance guarantee.
So I guess have we received that final inspection report?
That is not in tonight's meeting documents?
What we've received is an email from the DPW director stating that him and the engineer from Graves Engineering ran out to the site, reviewed it, and to quote Ms. Bernard, "I saw no major concerns that would affect DPW assets." The wording in the bylaw states, "The inspector finds a system to be adequate."
I got a question here. So we specify them to construct the stormwater structures in accordance to the plan. So was Mr. Bernard, in fact, in possession of the plan in hand when he was out there and looking at features and saying, yep, that's this, and yep, that's that?
Prior, excuse me, prior to the inspection, I sent them the, basically, the final copy of the stormwater management plan and had them, so before he went out, he had the plan, and then he referenced that plan while doing the inspection.
We actually received an as-built plan of the stormwater systems?
Yep.
And is it not, in my experience, it's uncommon to have as-built reviewed by the DPW director. It's common to be reviewed by a review engineer.
Didn't they go to Graves Engineering as well?
They went to Graves Engineering, both. Dan from Graves Engineering, who was oversought by Jeff, went out with the DPW director. And so they both conducted the inspection at the same time, and they actually wanted to, moving forward for any final inspections and receiving as-bills, to have the DPW director go with our third-party engineer as well.
That makes sense, yeah.
So do we have, if everything's been done right, I really want to give these people their money back. That's fair. Like, that is the end goal. Do we have the documentation we need to say this has been done correctly?
I think that's a judgment call for the board to make. That's where I quoted Mr. Bernard's statement and quoted what the bylaw says.
Do we have any feedback from the engineer that this matches as-built, or the engineers say anything, or?
I haven't received any feedback as of yet, but he was included on that email.
I don't like.
And I would suggest there's several options the board could take. The most conservative option would be to defer this to the next meeting pending receipt of an email from the engineer stating as-bills were correct and that, using the word in here, that they find the system to be adequate.
That's exactly what I was gonna suggest.
A less conservative approach would be to authorize release, authorize sign of a certificate of completion and release of the performance guarantee upon receipt of such a communication from the engineer. The difference is, the latter one would allow that to occur less than two weeks from now. The more conservative approach would be two weeks from now.
I am personally okay with the release upon receipt because that can just be checked to be, does it, basically, does it match the wording that this is adequate? But I'm curious what other board members think, one way or another. I, I wanna be respectful of the builders who have done everything up until this point, but I wanna make sure that we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is, too.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, regardless of the builders, this, this is something that we haven't done before, and if we're gonna start doing it, we probably should do it the right way and cross the Ts and dot the Is and have the correspondence in hand in a timely manner before the meeting. That's just my opinion.
I'll turn to our board members out in the great, out in the great internet to share their thoughts on the topic.
I don't, I don't think I necessarily feel like qualified to make that call. Like, I feel like either we have the preponderance of the information that says, yes, we can do this, or we don't. I'm not quite sure what to do with that.
Yeah.
I agree with that as well. Sorry, Mr. Allison, I agree with that as well. I think if we had at least something from the engineer confirming it, I would feel more comfortable, but I'm not exactly sure how that all would work.
So what I seem to be hearing from the board is an overall feeling that we'd be more comfortable not releasing funds contingent upon the letter from the engineer, but actually getting the letter specifying first, seeing it, and then releasing the funds at our next meeting. Do I read that correctly?
Yes.
The more conservative approach is, which actually, I would just, I tend lean that approach.
And Mr. Bernard, if I may?
Yeah, please.
Anybody online that's a member of the board, if I overspeak you, just keep speaking, and I will hear you speaking, and I will stop, and I apologize because it is, is far more important that we hear your input being remote in a timely manner that you have it, and I have complete opportunity, so that just clarifies that. That's, that's all I wanted to do.
So I think it'd be appropriate if you need to, despite my taking action, or have a motion to defer this, the certificate of completion issued to the February 26th meeting. And I think we can communicate to the applicant that the only reason it's being continued is because we need to get the written confirmation from the engineer.
If someone wants to give a so moved on that, we can do that.
No, I think it's more appropriate that we clarify. I move that we continue to the next, to our, when is our next meeting? Feb. 26?
26th, yep.
I move that we continue to February 26, the certificates of completion and the release of performance guarantee for 147 Holman and 159 Holman.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor. Mr. Willsmer?
Aye.
Ms. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
And an aye from myself.
Just as a point of clarification, if you continue the certificates of completion, you couldn't act on the release because the bylaw is written that you have to issue the certificates before you grant the release.
Sure, I just wanted to be more clear than less, I guess. Good, thank you, though.
All right. Wonderful. Oh, growing pains, how exciting. All right. We are up to board discussions on both solar, solar energy systems, including battery energy storage systems. Excuse, excuse me, and scenic roads. Excuse me again, my. All right. So I wanted these on the agenda because we're in crunch time. We kind of came together and had some pretty lofty goals for May, for Maytown Meeting, and we've had a lot going on. And if we want to get these forward, we basically have a month to put them together. Challenge level is a few things that I want to lay out. One is our Water Supply Protection District bylaw is still deferred to Springtown Meeting. We have some documents about that, and we can kind of review that. That is in our ongoing items under AquaFur Protection District, so we can kind of look at that as well in here. Mr. Harris has put forward a edit to that to really clarify things, to make it even, to make it really unambiguous about meetings, as well as a few little smithing here and there. Solar energy systems and scenic roads are both encountering some interesting terrain we want to be aware of. The scenic roads issue is simply that, to my understanding, you, I do not believe, and I would accept an argument from them to the contrary, but I do not believe that Unitil has been notifying us as state law requires they do when they are doing tree work on scenic roads. Now, they have for an upcoming, they've, like, we know that's coming down the pike soon. But I believe there's been work done on scenic roads that hasn't been brought to us before. So I'm glad they're doing that going forward. I don't believe they have done that every time they've worked on scenic roads. There's not a lot we can do about that without a functioning scenic road bylaw. Solar energy systems presents another unique challenge, and I do believe a more pressing one myself, in that, you see, battery, battery energy storage systems has been added. And there has, traditionally, and Mr. Harris, please correct me where I'm misspeaking. Traditionally, it's been the case that battery energy storage systems have been, have been developed as an accessory used to solar farms. Oh, you're putting up solar panels as an accessory used, yeah, you're gonna have some energy storage there, too. Businesses have started cropping up that are just battery energy storage systems independent of the solar farms. The state has been very clear that they expect us to accommodate these as, even as, when they're separate entities, as part of the right that solar energy systems exist and have for existing. So we can't just say, well, we haven't allowed these, so wait. The state has basically said, you're going to allow it, and if you don't have a law to allow it, you're going to allow it anyway. A company has come forward and wants to build in Lunenburg. Now, they have approached the ZBA because our zoning doesn't allow it currently, and, but would rather, rather than going through the ZBA and punching their way through things, they would rather work with the town and make sure we're in a place that we do have, they're perfectly willing to wait for the spring to us to put, for us to put together a bylaw regarding battery energy storage systems that would meet the town's needs as well as be appropriate for allowing these businesses. Again, because the state has basically said, if you overregulate this, your law is gonna be bonk and isn't gonna count, because the state wants this to happen. Understandable, good for the environment, great. But that puts us under a bit of a time crunch. Have I represented that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. We had talked about looking at solar, about looking at our solar bylaw overall. Frankly, I was kind of thinking we would just punt it because we got a lot going on. But in updating, adding solar, adding the battery systems without also addressing some of the holes and flaws in our current solar bylaw looks to be less than ideal. It's not that we can't, but it leaves a lot of problems behind and isn't great. This is, in my mind, a doable, but frankly, a formidable amount of bylaw to put together in a month. I've talked to you for several minutes, but I wanted to give everyone the lay of the land for where all these are kind of sitting before turning to the board and say, how do you want to handle this?
Just touch on what you said, Mr. Stevens. Doing research on another project, another community, I came across a state attorney general decision letter where they rejected a community's solar bylaw rewrite because among, among the reasons they rejected it, the solar bylaw rewrite prohibited standalone battery energy storage systems. And the AG was very clear that under Chapter 48, Section 3, master general law, the standalone battery energy storage systems enjoy the Dover protection that solar systems have.
Is that actually in the general law? Is that actually an exemption that they have written into the general?
Solar generating facilities have, and the attorney general has interpreted that as being.
The interpretation, okay. So it hasn't changed since we initially wrote our solar bylaw under duress by the state?
What has happened is technology has changed, and what is happening is for the state to achieve its solar generating capacity goals, battery energy storage systems are necessary in order to store the solar generating energy that's being, being generated in one location but is needed in another location as part of the utility transit system, is what it amounts to.
Mr. Harris and I have been in meetings, had been in a couple of meetings with, with members of the company that is looking to build this, because, again, they, they came forward saying effectively, yeah, we could punch our way through, we'd rather be collaborative, which is pleasant, and. which is pleasant. And today, there was also a meeting bringing in fire and police and the building commissioner as well to get their input on what things might look like. Mr. Harris has said by the end of the month, he could have a bylaw together that should meet the various needs, be appropriate for the state, be mindful of things. These discussions involve things like noise and everything you'd expect. So he can put together that bylaw for us. How do we want to handle that and these other goals? And this is where I turn to the board. Personally, I'm willing to nose to the grindstone to get through all of them and do some really hard, meaningful work, but it's really easy to say that, and we all got lives. So I turn to the board and say, how do we want to approach this?
I would add one more caveat that you're, how many bylaws have you helped to put together?
I mean, a good handful at this point. I don't know for sure. We've had a couple at multiple town meetings, so I'm, six. I don't know for sure if that's higher low, to be frank.
And you're about four years in, I think?
Yeah, around that.
Okay.
I think it must be higher for four years in, but either way, yeah.
I mean, the new bylaws have a way of getting flushed out through, you know, the public hearing process, through the planning board, and then, of course, the mulling back and forth at different groups and different people and different discussions before town meeting, and then, of course, at town meeting. It's very important that you have all the questions answered before it goes to town meeting. And typically, the public hearing process can thrash that out. However, I just want everybody to be aware, if the public hearing process does not thrash out those questions...
Town meeting will.
Well, and I'm against that. I really don't think that we should be bringing bylaws to town meeting that need threshing out on the floor at town meeting. I really don't agree with that.
My experience is, not here, but in other communities, that if there's too much discussion and controversy on item at town meeting floor, it does not go through.
Exactly. I mean, so, so there's the hurry up and get to the point, and then find out that it's not agreeable, and we've wasted our time. Not necessarily. I mean, we made steps forward to the next one, but we've not only wasted our time, we've wasted the public's time, we've wasted town meeting's time.
And I'll also note that, it's my understanding of, I understand Brian Ding was, is from his discussions with town council, town council agreed with this, that this was the best approach that we, for us to try to take.
Sure. No, and I'm not, I'm not naysaying it right off the bat, saying that I'm not going to be for it. I'm just saying that it's, it's going to be a high bar for me to get behind something within a month to present to town meeting. And I'm just going to put that right out there, right up front.
I don't disagree. I don't blame. I mean, I'm working with another community, and they've agreed that they're going, they're not under pressure from a company, so they're having about nine months to develop theirs, and they're, so they're much better off in that regard.
And I will just add one more caveat that doesn't really have to do with us, but in the past, the Select Board has gotten pilot agreements, I believe, for the solar, right? I believe.
I don't know.
Payment in lieu of taxes, because it's not necessarily a taxable business, I think. I'm not quite sure why they got the pilots, but I'm assuming that this, this new thing would also fall within that. And is this going to be, have to be something that we have, give a heads up to the Select Board that, hey, there's going to be this new thing?
The town managers were of this, because they were on a meeting with her, and she referred them to Mr. Brenner and myself.
Okay. And that may not be the case. I know we had pilots for the marijuana, but I'm pretty sure we hadn't for the solar as well, but I can't quite recall. I think those are the two things that have been stuffed down our throats by the state. So it would make sense.
I was not on the board when solar went through. I wasn't on the board when marijuana went through either, but I've been, because we've done certifications since then, I've heard a whole bunch. Yeah, I'll turn to the other board members who are, quote, here.
I personally am much more willing to defer to Mr. Allison, your position, as you are kind of much more aware of, or experienced how things are going to go here. I, like, it feels like one of those things that, like, yeah, we really crushed that, we could get it done, but will that help us in the big picture?
Thank you. Ms. Reed?
Um, I, yeah, I completely agree with what Mr. Willsmer said. It doesn't make a lot of sense to kind of, I guess, put all of our energy into so many different baskets, when maybe it would be better to focus on one or two things, so we can go in front of the town and have a, I guess, a complete succinct plan. Like Mr. Allison said, you don't want to go out there and have questions and have to keep going back to bylaws and, you know, trying to figure out what, what is best for them. It makes more sense to take more time or focus more on one or two, rather than, I guess, putting our fingers in too many pies, if that makes sense.
Yep. Thank you, and absolutely. Pers, like, when I look at it, to me, right now, scenic roads seems least time-sensitive because the situation isn't great there, but status quo is at least status quo. We kind of have to address the, the water, the Water Supply Protection District, because that was sent to this town meeting. And we can look at that in a moment as well, what Mr. Harris has, changes Mr. Harris has made to make the bylaw more clear. We talked over those. I don't think, there was nothing that, that changed the operation of what
No.
we discussed. Okay. But that makes, like, the Zone 2, Zone 1, Zone 3, those delineations more clear as a use table, just to really break it down for people. I am personally hesitant to do battery without the rest of the solar, but I, I'm also willing to have us dive into solar, see if we can get there, and if we can't, we don't do it. That's kind of my thought on it. But if the feedback from the board is, we don't even want to touch solar before spring, then we won't touch solar. I do, I would argue strongly that we do need to try to address battery, because if we don't, it's going to be addressed for us. Right now, we have people from the industry who know the business, who can help us understand things, but are also, they're, I mean, of course, they're looking out for their own interests, their business, but they're being very forthright so far about everything, and they've been useful for saying, well, here's the industry standards, here's the expectation, and what they have said has been echoed by the fire department and their understanding. So there's a lot, I think, of good info there that we have to work with. Yeah, again, I turn to the group. I kind of, that's my thought on it.
I don't think I disagree with anything you just said. I think that, that what you've said makes a lot of sense. We just, we're not going to get done. Everything that this planning board is supposed to get done in our hour and a half meetings. It's just not going to happen. So I, I think that we could get two bylaws ready for annual town meeting, but I don't know how much further we should try to stretch ourselves. I can't disagree with the battery situation, and it seems like we're already locked into the, to the water thing, which I'll have more to say when we get to that. But, yeah. And, and again, I'm open to go on full bore. I mean, I've gone full bore before on planning board, and we, we've had three, four, five hour meetings, four or five meetings in a row, and we've, we've gotten it done. And, and some of it was successful and some of it wasn't. So, and I don't want to naysay, but I don't want to get your hopes up, is all I'm saying. Right?
No, I think that's very fair.
You know, I'm open to however hard you guys want to work at it, because I volunteer just like you guys do, and, and it's important to me. So...
I would like us to do, would, I'd like us to pivot and take a look. It's in the meeting file for today, in the, whatever we call our file storage, to look at the water district protection as Mr. Harris made changes. On a technical level, if we went through with this or a version of this, we would probably, because there's enough small edits, it would probably be better, rather than going there and saying, well, proposed with all of these amendments, it would probably be better to pull it and resubmit. Now, the town's expecting it anyway and wants to see it, but just, that would make for a cleaner presentation. But I don't know if people have had a chance to look at it yet, and I don't blame you if you haven't, but if we could take some time and look at that, I want to see how we feel about where the water is kind of sitting right now, and that would inform me some as well. The documents in our folders would be draft of revised waters, it doesn't want to show me that. Draft of, it doesn't show me the name here either. That's lovely.
I think it starts out with 08.
Yeah, thank you. The one that begins 08, which is the, the changes to the Water Supply Protection District bylaw we put forward, as well as 09, Water Supply Protection District Use Table. That is new, and is just a use table that lays out what has already been discussed in the bylaw. Mr. Harris showed these to me today, and I already gave some of my thoughts and feedback. And those have, those have not been incorporated yet, but I think it's a good place to stop and take a look. Mr. Harris, would you be willing, on the bylaw redraft, to call out for us the notable changes?
Okay.
They're in yellow on our papers. Amanda, would you be willing to call this up and screen share it to the public while we talk about it? I know that the odds of them getting a great view isn't wonderful, but that means if they're at home, they're more likely to get to see things.
Absolutely.
You know, if I may?
Yeah.
I just want to reiterate my concerns with this that I expressed at the public hearing prior to last town meeting and at the last town meeting. This is an entire deletion and rewrite of what we currently have. And I was not in favor of that to begin with. And I guess if the consensus of the board is in favor of it, then I will sit down with the seven to 10 pages on one side and the seven to 10 pages on the other side, and I will make sure that nothing that I felt was important got deleted.
Oh, what is not included in here is, and these are numbered, labeled 08, 09, it's called 01, 02, 03, 04, 05, 06, 07, are tables that takes the existing bylaw, the proposed bylaw, and, and comments on what the differences are.
Okay.
Yeah, so, Mr. Harris, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We can share that with everybody.
I'll see. I don't need us to, people to dive into each of those individually tonight, but Annie, could you please share those as well?
I'll send those to Annie.
Great. Thank you.
So what Mr. Harris has already done was sit down with the, with the proposed bylaw, which is what Adam initially put together, and then we discussed and made edits, too, and did a line-by-line comparison between the existing bylaw and the proposed one, and was very thorough about, well, this means this, this was probably removed for this, this was removed for this reason, as well as some recommendations of, this was included, but I would get rid of it, and here's why. And that all leads to the redraft that is in front of us now.
And I did, reason there's several, seven different tables is, there's one on overall outline, one on purposes, purpose, one on permitting process, one on permitted uses, one on prohibited uses.
So the ABC all the way?
Yeah.
Okay. Good. I look forward to looking at that. Thank you. So I guess a follow-up question. 08 draft, is that your additions to Adam's 07 draft?
Yes. That's, that's my addition to what went to town meeting in November.
Yeah, so 01 through 07 are just file structure he used when putting together the list of every difference between the two. Then 08 is a redraft of our proposed bylaw based on changes he felt that would make it more clear and more succinct.
So both he's in that sentence were Richard?
Yes.
Okay. So 01 through 08 were your work?
01 through 09 are my work.
Okay.
Yes. And again, 01 through 07 are tables that say, here is, yeah, here's what the current town bylaw says. Here is the proposed bylaw.
Good.
And a note about if there's, why this would change, or if there's a difference.
Okay, super.
Yep.
Thank you.
And after you look at those, you want to, I'll be happy to sit down with you and...
Would you mind just walking us through the proposed with changes? People can then look in and get some of the details of why.
In Section B, scope of authority, Item 2 is a new sentence. Nothing in 250-4.9 impose the regulation on parcel, parcels or portions of parcels located within Zone 1. The reason it says portions of parcels is there are some where the line would go through a piece of property. On one side of the line would be Zone 2, the other side would be Zone 1.
I guess, of course, I've got a question right off the bat. So since Zone 1 is, is DEP, we have no, we have no say about it?
You could regulate it, but the proposed bylaw doesn't.
So are we being less?
Less restrictive. Because you're basically deferring to Mass. DEP for restriction there, because you can't be, effectively, you can't be less restrictive than Mass. DEP.
Well, that's what I was thinking. We can't be...
You can be more restrictive.
This is less restrictive?
Yeah.
So, but it's not enforceable, because Mass. DEP could come and say that that's less restrictive and no.
No, it's less strict that you're not regulating it. You're deferring to Mass. DEP regulations.
Okay. So six, one half dozen the other. I get you. Okay.
Oh, Annie, could you zoom in more, so the page is the width of the screen? I don't know if it can do that, but that might, for those who are watching at home, that might give them better shot of... Welcome. We've got to thank you from the television booth.
And on Section C, definitions, we put in Zone 1 and Zone 2. Zone 1, we've defined that, that was not in the previous draft, and you need to define what Zone 1 is, so you can have purpose of saying you're not regulating it. And again, it uses Mass. DEP definition and then adds statement, no portion, no parcels or portions of parcels, the zone, within Zone 1 shall be subject to any regulations imposed by 250-4.9. And then Zone 2, we've added to the definition, for purposes of subsection... And then zone two, we've added to the definition for purposes of zone subsection two fifty dash four point nine. Zone two shall not extend within that area included in zone one. And again, according, accordingly, no parcels or portions of parcels located within zone one are considered to be included within, within zone two. And the reason for this is, it, as you may recall, at the town meeting, there was a question raised that you look on the map, zone two seemed to extend into zone one. And I have attempted to get some clarification on mass DEP, how that could occur. And, oh, thank you for the question. We'll get back to you and they never did. So what this says very clearly is even if mass DEP map shows zone two coming in, for our zoning purposes, we're cutting it so they can't overlap.
Again, all of this with the understanding that zone one is regulated by the, uh, by the wa, presumably the water district. Or by the wa, is it, is it just by the water district or would it be by the well? Because there are some zone ones that are public wells, public well, that aren't public, they're just.
No, they're public water supplies because of the transient nature of the people and the business. It's, Stillman's is a public water supply.
Yes.
But it doesn't serve the public. It serves the transient people that use their business.
Yes.
So it's a public.
Yeah.
So is that, um, is that also regulated by the water district? Cause we are, we've talked about how basically the regulation is by the water district in DEP through the water district most generally, not, or DEP could also come in directly.
The districts' wells, they would do it. Otherwise it'd just be mass DE, mass DEP.
Okay.
I don't think the water district actually regulates anything. That's why this is our, our article, right? This is a zoning article. The water district doesn't really.
They have, they have responsibility in mass DEP to.
They go by what DEP says and what this bylaw says. So they're going.
They had to take action to, it's effectively implement mass DEP regulations.
So I, I should rephrase, cause I didn't, I said regulation, that was the wrong word. I believe I meant enforcement in that case.
Okay.
Yeah, no, thank you for that clarification.
And basement discussion today and on next page, zone three, I'm adding a statement to make sure that we also understand if zone two and zone three overlap, there, nothing's on three, it will be, uh, subject to zone two. So, um, we're going to make that clear. And then in section D, the draft bylaw that went to town meeting only delineated zones two and three. If you're going to exclude zone one, you need to delineate zone one so people know where it is. And so I've added this to add zone one in here as part of the delineation.
And is, is that, that's, that shows on this twenty twenty-one map that we referenced, right? Dated July, okay.
On item F, section F, the foreign uses are permitted within, it said the water supply protection district. We're saying zones two and three of the district. Make clear it doesn't apply to zone one. And then on further than that section, there's some highlights sections to correct the references to subsections of the bylaw.
And we have, that's what we had amendments for. One of the things I believe we had amendments for it.
And instead of saying this bylaw, I've put this zoning bylaw, make it clear.
Oh, that's right. Then the, the codification because of the different.
Right.
Inputs, yep. So I, I have a question on that. I noticed that you added zoning instead of, instead of this bylaw, you, you added zoning. So this zoning bylaw.
Right.
There are still references in here that say this bylaw. Should, should that be?
I'll correct those.
Okay. Okay. I just happened to notice that as well.
Thank you.
So that's probably a holdover from when we went. Oh, this is, oh, this is water. Nevermind. My bad. Brain fart.
On section H, again, correcting the reference to section of the bylaw. Section I, item two, in regard to the special permit granted authority, we give distribution. I've inserted the Lindbergh Fire Department as one of the entities that, applications to be distributed to. So we get, make sure we get their input. Paragraph three, insert those standards and requirements specified in section bylaw, this zone bylaw. And then on the next page, uh, section five B, uh, standards and requirements, again, referencing section zone bylaw. And then there's a section J, which I added. The previous version of it had one section that said uses required by special permit. Zone, we're in zone two and then has subsection that those uses requiring special permit in zone two are allowed by site plan review in zone three. I kept reading through that and that was confusing to me. So I thought it'd be clearer just to make it laid out that uses and activities that's subject to site plan review or permitted by site plan review. And that would be in zone three. So I've added that information in here. And I talked to the chair earlier, you have in your zoning bylaw under administration an invalidity clause, which is same thing as severability clause. Therefore, you don't need to have it in each subsection of the zoning bylaw because you had in one place, you don't need a dozen severability clauses. When you have that, it kind of raises a question when you don't have it. So it's clear, better just have one time. And, uh, those are the changes made there and I had developed a schedule of use table where I took the permitted, prohibited, site plan review uses and put them in tabular form.
And, uh, that would be document beginning oh nine in our files. And Annie, thank you for calling that up. Again, if you can make it nice and wide so the friends at home have the best opportunity to follow along with us.
Can, can I interrupt for one second? So going back to the new section J, uses and activities permitted by site plan review, we, so that should be site plan approval?
Oh, you're right.
It says later on, it says a site plan approval, but that heading needs to say approval unless it's something different than our.
Site plan, I, I look at the zone bylaw, but it should be site plan review and site plan approval is the final step in site plan review process.
We changed it because site plan review implied that we only got to look at it. We didn't have teeth in saying that you need to change this.
I'll correct that then.
Okay. That was my understanding on why we changed from review to approval.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well.
I, I've done one community that they have a dichotomy that for some uses, they use site plan review.
I don't want that.
Site plan approval.
I don't want that.
We are excl, to my knowledge, we are exclusively site plan approval.
And so I'm be sure.
Thank you.
Thank, good catch. Good catch.
I'm correct that. Um, essentially I took the, uh, uses as laid out under sections F, G, H, I, no, H and, uh, J and put them in tabular form. I find a table is much easier to understand which districts uses are allowed instead of having read through the narrative. And, um, that's what you have before you is a table form that I would incorporate into this. So that way I think it makes it clear, if nothing else does, it makes it very clear that this is not regulating zone one. Chair asked me earlier that you scroll down, you'll see that there are some blanks under zone three. And that's because those uses are not addressed how they're regulated in the text. So I'll go back through the zoning bylaw and verify which of those uses are, always require special permit and underline zoning and address it that way and bring it back to the board. So I always like things in table form.
Now, that's a smart addition to this because I think it helps.
So a question, so permitted, does that imply that you've got to go through a permit process?
It's permitted by right.
Okay, so there's, there's, we allow permits. Isn't there a special permit process through this?
There's, yeah, permit by right, special permits and site plan review categories. And there should be some listed as special permits in there.
Okay, so yes, I'm sorry, you're right. That's, yes. So yes, is, is by right? Okay. Maybe, I don't know, I have to look at our, cause, cause Adam came here and he, and he created our, our use table that we have now currently. We didn't have any tables in our bylaw. Um, and that was extremely useful.
I'll verify that this terminology conforms to.
I just, yeah, because we have so few tables and I, I assume we're going to get more and more that it would be nice if they're consistent from the get-go.
I sure hope we get more because man, they make bylaws so much nicer for people.
Yeah.
That was a concrete recommendation actually at a bylaw writing seminar I went to, was like, when.
Consistency?
Yeah, well, well, the big thing was they're like, nothing says bylaws have to only be words. Like include tables. They went so far as to point out the illustrative diagrams were helpful. I'm like, ooh. I'm in love with this and I never see this and I'm so happy because.
I've been a big proponent in getting the standard details. That would be nice.
Yeah, figures are really helpful or graphics are very helpful. I've been working on sign bylaw for another community and been researching sign bylaws and there's a few that have almost exclusively graphics. That we, when you start looking at the sign bylaws, you're looking at the diagrams, not looking so much at terminology.
That sounds so nice. Oh. In my professional life, I have been, I've done document design and so I, I veer much more, I like writing, but I veer much more towards, let's show people.
Super. Well, I want to thank you for that.
And now, Richard, we'd also, you had brought up, uh, and you'll get that in the oh one through oh seven docs. But you had also brought up the recommendation that we potentially take our definition section.
Yes.
Where we say, you know, aquifer, zone one, zone two, commercial fertilizer, all those things are specific here. And, uh, Richard brought up the idea that, that, that definitions should be consolidated under the main zoning bylaw, not separate for each one.
I don't disagree with that. However, there are certain instances where the same stinking word means five different things in the same stinking bylaw. That's why there are definitions in different areas.
And that's one of the problems for that.
Exactly.
And one way I've seen one community do that, because they had like three term, three, one word that meant three different things. They put in regards to, in the general bylaw, generally it means this. In regards to solar, it means this. In regards to water supply protection district, it means this.
That's a whole lot of air checking.
And that way it's, it's all there, but people, oh, okay. In fact, there's one, there's a couple of communities I've came across that they have topically grouped all of their definitions in the definition section. So you look at affordable housing, here's all the definitions. You're looking at water supply protection, here's all the definitions. And I, I thought that's a lot of work that they went through.
Well, you know, not for nothing though, that basically everything that we put down goes through lawyer speak, right? And then the lawyer speak, they always go back to the, to the, to the, to the MGL. The MGL is set up that way where, where one section has, each section, they can use the same word and means different things. So we're dependent on that though. So that's a kind of a limiting factor, but I, I, kudos to you if you can get a way around it.
One thing that I brought up was we do have a tradition in town of including definitions within the individual bylaw. And so I brought the idea that if we do elect to move them into zoning in general, that we would still want to maintain a definitions heading in this bylaw. And then say, see, basically whatever the legalese speak for, go see the definition in the actual zoning area.
That, not, yeah, we could have the general clause under the definitions and then any specific different uses of that same word could be defined.
And what I've also done in the community was in the introduction statement to the terms defined section, all terms as defined below, except in regards to solar bylaw, look at solar regulation, look at this section. Cause there are specific, affordable housing was a, is a particular issue of how you define terms. And so we, we addressed it that way so we could have all the definitions that go across all the barriers in one area and where there was some specific technical definitions that apply to wireless, solar and affordable housing, we made reference to those sections. There's different ways to address the problem, depends how the community wants to do it.
So we have this document to look at. It is effectively, this is the same bylaw we put forward. But with the amendments that were brought up included and some of those amendments further refined by Mr. Harris to, to ensure that, really to try and make it as clear as possible. I think you said it was four times. This really specifically calls out and says, if it's zone one, that, that's not us, that's DEP.
The use table reaffirms all that too.
Yeah. To try to make it clear to the public, this is what's going on. And I very much appreciate you where DEP is kind of dragging its heels in a response specifying exactly what the town would do with that. What I would like to do, knowing that this has been controversial, I mean, I, this is just kind of an unofficial action by a board member, but I don't ever want it to look like trying to do things subtly. I'm bad at subtle. What I would like to do is basically have some office hours to invite members of the community to come in and just kind of chat and go over things even before it's done to make, so no one is surprised. So yes, in an ideal world, people watch these meetings with rapt attention and are here when we talk about the subject and everything else. We know in practice that that's hard and I respect that. I also know that formal meetings like this, in addition to maybe not being everyone's jam and feeling boring, are intimidating for many people. So I thought having the opportunity to sit down and chat could both expose flaws we haven't thought of yet, but also build goodwill and try to show, no, really, here's what's being talked about. Just try to think through, try to respect the fact that there are people who are uncomfy, who are less uncomfy than they were before they saw it at last town meeting. But still want to make sure everything's put together, to have the opportunity to sit down and have a discussion rather than a, they stand at a podium, they talk to us, we talk to them and it's very formal.
I'm uncomfortable with that.
Oh, please.
Do we get fifteen hours a week from you, Richard?
It varies from week to week and what is needed, yes.
Right. So I'm not entirely sure that since we're working on less than 50% capacity on a temporary person and other things, oh, there's a lot of moving pieces going on. I'm not sure that that's the best use of that position's time. And I think.
This is not to have Richard do it. This is me as a board member. Simply saying, hey, if you, basically soliciting feedback and having discussions. Simply saying, hey, if, basically soliciting feedback and having discussions with people, the same way we do via email when they write in, and we say, oh, well, when they write to us as individuals and say, have you thought of X? Uh, in the same way when they stop us at the grocery store and say, hey, I have a question about what's going on. But just rather than having that opportu, making the opportunity more public and, um, available.
Oh, transparency, I'm all for that.
No, this isn't about having Richard sit for that time, because I don't think that's a good use of his time.
Okay, good.
No, this is just meant as, as, uh, the good version of PR and info gathering. To say, hey, this is what's being looked at, I want to talk it through. The same, like, the same as the emails I exchanged before the last one, when people said, does, or they came into the planning office and were like, but this affects my property. I'd be like, I don't think it does, and we'd have that discussion. And I think others of us on this or other topics have also had similar discussions. Just trying to make it more accessible to the public and more obvious, rather than people thinking, oh, I can call in. That's my thought.
I, I can call into what?
Like, I can call, the people who go, I'm going to call the planning office and give a piece of my mind.
Oh.
Or I can, um, because they do that once in a while, say, I, I want to talk to so-and-so. But making it proactive, positive outreach.
Okay, sure. The only concern that I have with that is that it, it, it should probably be all previous to any public hearings that we have before a town meeting, and that all those discussions should be brought up, name and address, back to the board for open discussion at open meeting.
I'm not...
You're not a department head, you're not being paid as staff, as Adam was, to sit there and talk to the public?
Mm-hmm. I'm not necessarily opposed, but we don't report, again, I, I don't, um, when, when I've been doing work at the planning office and someone has come by and said, I have a question, I haven't come back to the board, maybe I'm supposed to be. I've not come back to the board every time and been like, oh, this person came by with this specific question, and here's what we talked about.
If it's a bylaw on our agenda currently active, I believe that it would be prudent to do it the way that I described it, that conversations come back to the, to the group. And, and then that was a nice thing about having Adam or Richard. If Richard was going to do it, I wouldn't have this concern, because he's not part of this five-member elected group. This five-member elected group is the planning board, and we currently have on our agenda an active bylaw creation, and we're going to have public hearings, and then it's going to go to town meeting. So, I mean, not that I have a, I have a lot of issues, everybody knows that, but there are certain things that, that we're deficient at right now, just simply due to staffing. And, and I don't think that it's prudent to skirt open meeting law in any way, especially for bylaw creation.
If I'm not mistaken, is that why, um, we did the solar survey for members of the public to engage? And then we'd be able to, that way you're not representing, uh, as a member of the board and having discussions with the public, but then the public is be able to give feedback via surveys?
I mean, ideally, that's what public hearings are for, but, I mean...
I don't rem, I don't remember the solar survey, as awful as maybe that is. I'm trying to...
For the canopy, right?
Oh, okay, yeah, got it. I mean, if that's what makes you comfortable with it, I'm fine doing it. I pretty fundamentally disagree on the necessity of it, but because it's, again, it's no different than any other time, uh, any of us speak with members of the public. And I don't report, none of us report, to my knowledge, every time we're contacted by a member of the public, because that includes someone saying, hey, you know, at the grocery store. If that makes you comfy with it, I'm fine doing it. But I just, I, I would reiterate that I think it's completely unnecessary, but if that is a comfort level thing we need, I don't, and I also want to say, I would adamantly disagree that it's circumventing or skirting open meeting law, because that's a thing with specific requirements, for the same reason, and say, oh, do we want, like, should two of us be there one time, and two others of us be there another? And, and like, all the finagling that could theoretically happen.
It was just a suggestion, my friend, I'm just one, one member, so...
No, that's fine, but even if, if that makes one member more comfy, I'm fine doing it, but...
I'm uncomfortable in general, so, don't have to...
It's the seat, man. It's a roll. I have no clue if they're old, they're perfectly nice, I'm just cracking a joke for the love of God. I don't want to do that where people go, oh, the seats at town hall are horrible. I've heard a lot from two of us, and it's much harder to participate, um, remotely, and I respect that. So, I want to turn to our other board members and see if they want to share anything. And the answer can be no, and that's fine, but I want to make sure you're not being excluded from this discussion due to remoteness.
I just had one thing. Um, what Mr. Allison said about, um, getting names and addresses and adding it into the record, I do agree with that perspective, um, because I think just from a record-keeping point of view, especially if it's, it's different than somebody coming in and asking a question, right? Or making a comment on something that's not really on our, on our, our plan for right now. But if they're coming in with specific ideas or issues when it, when it comes to proposed bylaw work, to me, it would make sense just to have those names and addresses, to read it into the record, to say, hey, this person, who's a member of our community, came in and had this suggestion, do we agree with it? I think in the long run, um, that might be a little bit better than, hey, I talked to somebody and they said this. Because at least then we'd have a record of kind of who was participating, and then if we would have to come back to something, we could clarify with the person who comes in. And obviously, Mr. Chair, you would know who you spoke to, um, by doing these office hours, um, but the rest of us really wouldn't. Um, I think office hours in general are great, if that's something you want to volunteer, you, you know, your own time to, wonderful. Um, but I just think merely from a record-keeping point of view, what Mr. Allison said does make sense.
Uh, I would only caution, I'm going to be frank. I am not looking to take detailed minute level or even vaguely minute level notes. My, my goal with this is to sit down with people and say, what are your worries? And they say them, and then we talk about them. I'm happy...
That's understandable. I just think if you're going to bring it back to the board for discussion, it, it, to me, it makes more sense just from a record-keeping point of view, that we know who said it, who was spoken to. I get that you don't want to take minutes, I wouldn't want you to take minutes and have it be that specific, but if there's an idea that comes forth that you think is important enough to share in the process, to me, it just would make sense to do that. But, I mean, I, you know, that's just my opinion, you do, you do what you want to do. I think office hours are a great idea either way.
No, I hear you. I just want to set the expectation that I'm going to take, like, three-word notes most of the time, because I start taking detailed notes, then get distracted by good discussion, and then go, oh, right, about that. And I also want it to be, my goal is to be less formal, but I hear the concern, and I think we can thread that needle effectively. All right. Here, nothing else, I just kind of wanted to bring all that up. Looping us back. So, I feel like what I'm hearing is effectively what I said. So, I want to be overt about this, because it's easy to hear what you've already said, is, yeah, we got to deal with water, because we gotta. Got to deal with batteries, because if we don't, it's going to be dealt with for us. And if we can make good pro, if we could get something together, the solid on solar overall, that would be best, but may not be feasible, so we really have to be willing to either take what we put together or just also be willing to say no thank you to it, like, to recognize we can try, but very likely may not get through the point. We want to put that as a bylaw going forward for spring. Do I understand that correctly?
Uh, that's, that's how I understand this.
I agree.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, great. Like I said, that, that's what I kind of said before, but I want that overt feedback, because we are our own, we are our own best echo chamber. Great. Anything else on this topic for tonight?
Short of Mr. Willsmer saying anything about it, um, we have not gotten together on the scenic roads, and I still have not put together that folder that I had discussed on our Google Drive. Uh, however, I have collected, uh, all the material, read through it, and made notes on it, uh, on my own, and, um, would recommend that we have a group discussion about how we proceed with how we want to start. Do we want to take one town's bylaw and, and change, change the information to suit us? Or do we want to create our own from scratch? There's a lot of good, different ideas, there's a lot of ideas that, uh, I think were good for the community that they were in, but not necessarily suited our community, and some others that weren't necessarily mentioned and came up i- in discussions, in my recollection, about our community. Is the intent to put that off until the fall, I guess, uh, at this point? I mean...
I think that's what I just heard, I would say, I think that's what I just heard from the group, was we're not looking for that for spring.
I, I would like, like, in an ideal world, um, yes, uh, continue working on scenic road, like, in the forefront would be my preference. But, you know, understanding that we, we seem to be approaching a little bit of a crunch, and we need to do, what needs to get out there, because I am, you know, a, as we've said, having things decided for us is why we're here. And, you know, being ahead of those things is, is, I think, the best course.
Before I, uh, before he left, when I was talking to Adam about his transition out of the role, I actually asked him for his, uh, wisdom. And I was like, like, I just was really like, what, what wisdom do you want me to know going forward? With you, like, without having a planner, because this is before we even knew we'd have Mr. Harris, and we might be flying solo. And, uh, he's not the writer of the phrase, but it stuck with me was when he said, plan or be planned upon. And I'm like, ooh, yep, if we don't take action, others will for us.
Again, I think this also leads into a discussion of scheduling the public hearing.
Yes.
That, that's, that's, it's important to know when you're going to have public hearings, so you can work back to a date when you have to have everything ready.
When do we need to have the public hearing? Like, I, this is where, I don't know the timeline, this was all normally handled by, like, Adam, or Adam and Annie, or Adam and Marjorie. I don't know the...
Well, we know, when, when is the warrant articles due?
So, the warrant closes mid-March, I believe?
March eighteenth.
March eighteenth. So, you know that by March eighteenth, you need to be able to submit something for the warrant.
So, we don't like to say it, but a placeholder?
Yeah.
And then we have the public hearings, and then we can revise that placeholder. And then we have to have the placeholder ready to go on the printed warrant by April...
That pretty much means that the first meeting in March, you need to have at least a draft of what you want to submit as a placeholder.
Good draft, not a iffy, that has to be really...
Then means you're probably looking at the first meeting in April for the public hearing.
And I believe that timing works.
Actually, I don't think so, because May, May, first week in May, I think, is a meeting.
I feel like our public hearings this time were right, not that we want to be as close as we were this time.
We don't want to be that close.
But our public hearings were right up to the wire and were legal.
Well, also...
Not great, but...
Also, the warrant was only open for just over a month last year, and they gave us ample time, and they gave us almost three months this year. And I do thank the select board for that, that was great, um, but it's always, it always comes to a crunch.
So, what you're looking at is the, first meeting in April is April eighth. If you're, when's your town meeting held?
I think I might have put that on my calendar already, I did have to look it up.
That's it? May fourteenth?
May fourteenth?
May fourteenth, okay.
Tuesday?
Tuesday? Okay.
Uh, no, Springtown meeting is on a, um...
Saturday, isn't it?
Saturday.
Typically.
I don't remember if it's the fourth or the eleventh, I think it's the fourth.
It's typically the first, I thought, the first week.
That's, yeah, um...
So, if you had a public hearing April eighth, it'd be roughly three weeks before town meeting.
So, we could only continue it once, basically.
You have April twenty-second as the continuation date?
Right, so, if, if we get twenty people in the room, then it's not likely going to go well.
So, that, that raised a question, then, do you want to... I, I think it's kind of, you could help advertise for hearing on the twenty-fifth of March, but that'd be pushing, or have a special meeting date for the public hearing.
I would, I would go for March twenty-fifth, but, um, and then if it's not ready, we can just postpone it. But we can't have it if it's not posted.
So, by March eleventh, you have to have, have a real complete proposal that you can put as a placeholder, hold in the public hearing on March twenty-fifth, with the idea that you could have continuation to April eighth, and hopefully finalize it that meeting or the twenty-second, the latest.
That makes sense to me.
Okay. I just need to get this worked out in my mind.
Thank you.
So, I'm pretty sure whatever we come up with for a draft within the warrant deadline is most likely what will be printed in the warrant, I believe.
Yeah. Anything, anything else, then becomes amendments on town meeting forwards, gets into a big issue.
So, if we've got considerable changes, we'd want to have a handout ready at the meeting, you know, and all, all that happy stuff? Did we even have a full-size plan of the water district map at the meeting, like we said we would?
There was...
I don't remember seeing it.
I didn't see it.
I didn't see it.
I was told there would be one, um...
I was told that, too. But I did not see it.
Yeah, so...
And I looked for it.
Uh, yeah, I did as well, I was aware, but by the time I knew it wasn't there, that wasn't the moment to go, because we were already there and moving forward, so just time for discussion.
Yep.
But again, hopefully, as well, um, any concerns can be addressed. People have had ample time to look at, anyone who says they haven't had time to look at the map, at some point, we have to say, come on.
Yeah, no.
You've literally had six months, like, I, I, I respect that it's hard, but six months is a while.
So, to have a public hearing March twenty-fifth means the notice for public hearing will have to be published no later than March eighth, sometime that week of March fourth.
Okay.
Which means it's before the planning board meeting, so probably at the next meeting, we need to have, uh, just at least a list of what's going to be, the, the skeleton of what's going to be there.
Yeah, no, I, that makes absolute sense to me.
So, this is where the reality of the crunch sets in.
Oh, yeah, no, I, these are, these dates all feel pretty much as I was expecting them.
That's when, when Andy was doing the gin last week, it said the... That's when, when Ann was doing the gen last week, it said they really need to set the public hearing date Monday night, because that's when you start visualizing the timeframe, the, the time schedule for the deadlines and stuff.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. All right. Anything else on these discussions? Okay, hearing done. We're gonna go on to committee reports. Time's pushing. I don't want to, I don't want to rush us, but by the same token, expedience is always wonderful, if it's appropriate. Master Plan Steering Committee.
Unfortunately, I was not able to make it to the, uh, public meeting. Uh, excuse me. Um, yeah, I don't, I don't have any information, unfortunately, because I was not able to attend.
May, Mr. Willsner, may I, oh, Mr. Willsmurr, I always say "nurr," and I know it's "murr." I was there. May I share some info?
Please go right ahead and share.
The public meeting, public meetings at the Eagle House, uh, which others may know as the Senior Center, or now named the Adult Activities Center, is, uh, went smashingly well. Um, I thought so. In that we had, I, I don't have the count off, but I think we had overall about, between the two meetings, about 40 members of the public, give or take. Um, it might've been like 36, 38. I don't remember exactly, but we had a lot. Much better than the first, that had almost, like, only a couple of members of the public who didn't already have town government roles. Um, having a s- a dual times, one earlier, one later, really helped us get, meet the needs of more people. There was a lot of great feedback. They presented some, basically some statements that were to help us evaluate where we are in terms of, like, is their assessment of what the town wants, based on the surveys, appropriate? And overall, there was some, a lot of, a lot more good discussion, over-under, and RKG and Inis Associates left with even more info from the town about what people are looking for, about how to interpret things, about what they've presented that makes sense, about what they've presented that's confusing. It was interactive. There was a lot of great discussion. So that's kind of the, the dime store version, but it was more successful than the others, and just, we're getting increasing engagement at every step. We had 435 respondents, respondents to the second, uh, survey, right around there, might even be up to 460-something. And if that sounds low, I wanna put it in the context that that is 5% of the registered voters in this town.
Typically more than we get at town meeting?
Yes.
Far more.
There's far more than we get. I mean, you're talking three times more than we often get at town meeting.
Recently.
Recently, yes. You're talking, uh, four surveys, getting a 5% response rate on a survey people have no particular need to complete is actually great. That's plenty of data to extrapolate out to the population as a whole. Over-under even pointed out, saying, "Here's where the data's robust, here where it might be more lacking." And they also, uh, but our response rate is huge, and frankly, they're thrilled. They never get this level of engagement from communities. So Lunenburg, thank you. You're making your voices heard, and it's being, they are being heard and it's appreciated. And if you didn't fill out the survey, your neighbors are making their voices heard. So get yourself on that next survey, so yours is too. Not gonna stop selling this till we're done. Thank you for allowing me that, Mr. Willsner.
Thank you.
Open Space Ad-Hoc Committee.
So we, uh, I don't believe we've met. If they have met, I haven't, I was not there, but there is a site walk coming up this Saturday, Feb. 17, uh, because they have, um, recommended transfer of care and custody, care, custody and control of two Lake Shirley parcels to the Parks Commission. Um, one is 50, 51 Parmenter Road, uh, the other one is, uh, it's listed as Zero Shirley Reservoir, but it's affectionately known as Stump Cove. Um, again, the open space with the Select Board, and I would assume that there are members of the Parks Commission going as well, uh, again, Feb. 17, um, at 10:00 AM. I'm not sure we, I'm not sure if it's open to the public, um, quite honestly, but if it's posted meeting, then I can't imagine they'd turn anybody away.
Uh, thank you. Mr. Allison? I made the mistake of, I clicked away from the agenda, so now I have to open it.
It's all right. Uh, the next two are mine as well.
Okay, thank you.
Building Design Committee, we have not met, um, for some time now. Agricultural Commission, we will be meeting this Thursday at the Ritter Building at 7:00 PM, and we will be, uh, taking in all ideas and comments and concerns about the upcoming season Farmer's Market. Um, that will be the bulk of our discussion meeting this Thursday at 7:00 PM at the Ritter.
Thank you. Um, did you, I'm sorry, did you share the Municipal Building Design Committee?
I did. We have not met for quite some time.
And I got, and that leaves Capital Planning Committee. We have not met since our last meeting. Economic Development Committee, uh, we did meet, and I can't find my notes on that meeting. I am terribly sorry. Um, I'd have to get back to us. There was nothing momentous about it, but I don't have those notes in front of me. Stormwater Ta- Task Force.
Our next meeting is this Thursday.
Great.
Is that gonna be at the DPW, or is that gonna be at the Ritter? Do you know?
Oh, yes. Uh, we've been hosting them at the DPW currently. Um, if there is more public engagement, if we go, I figure we might move it, but currently, it's just at the DPW, uh, Thursday, 7:00 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you. Monticent Regional Planning Commission.
Uh, yes, so we met last week on Thursday. Um, the, uh, they brought up, again, the regional municipal, um, help, uh, that they're, they're offering. Um, they had a lot of towns reach out in the meeting and say that they'd be interested in that. Again, it's non-educational municipal help. Um, so one person hired by MRPC to go to multiple regions. Um, I, they're, I guess they're still kind of working out, um, what the plan is for that, but they did reach out to, um, all towns in the MRPC region. Um, and the other thing I wanted to throw out there is, I think it's this Friday, is Friday the 16th, yeah, at 6:30 PM, um, MRPC is having a hybrid meeting, um, for, it's the Monticent Region Climate Pollution Reduction Workshop. Um, so it's available to the public. If anybody wants to sign up, you can find the info on MRPC's website. Um, it's for people in town, as well as board members, so all that information is, is online, on MRPC.org.
Thank you. And Monticent Joint Transportation Committee, I remembered my Cs.
Very good. We have not met since our last meeting. We're meeting on Wednesday this week.
Thank you, Ms. Reed.
I have a question for the Joint Transportation. Um, we typically, and this may be something that the office people know, um, we typically are, uh, we get, uh, I don't know, six or eight traffic counts per year. Um, and I believe that there are four standard and two, uh, requestable. And I believe that it's in a four-year cycle, so we've got 16 that typically get reviewed every four years. Um, I just, my question, I guess, is, is when do we need to have those requests, and, um, are we aware of that? Have they reached out to us? And, uh, question to the body, uh, to the members is, do we have, uh, additional traffic counts that we like at specific places? Uh, what we've done in the previous, um, times was, we know we've got a development coming up. We wanna get a, a before and an after picture of traffic counts. Um, I don't believe they'll do intersection analysis, so they won't tell you how many turned left, how many went straight, how many turned right.
It's just the, uh...
But they just straight through traffic counts, which is, which is beneficial in a lot of areas.
Do they do directional counts?
They do directional counts, yes.
I haven't heard anything about it. This is the first I've heard.
Okay. So, we typically, uh, will, like, like I said, we, we get, I believe it's four standard, uh, every four years, um, so there's 16 standard that we typically go through, but, um, in, in years past, we've, we've had the opportunity to ask for two or four additional.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And here I was, just gonna point out that, uh, Joint Transportation, in fact, falls under the marijuana use bylaw, so.
Joint Transportation.
I am mature. Remember, Lunenburg, you elected me. It's your fault.
That's one of the six marijuanas that we voted on.
That's why I brought it up.
There you go.
Specific use. There we go. Ongoing items. Master Plan, uh, I'll just, I, I've been continuing to meet with over-under. We are hoping to secure a semi-permanent or permanent home for the 3D model of the town. Um, the, just, those meetings are all still going splendidly. Uh, their feedback has been that even without a land use director, they are finding Lunenburg to be a very easy and pleasant town to work with, in terms of engagement by local government, in terms of investment in the process. So hats off to the community members of this town who are making that process possible. Thank you. We've talked about wat-, about the Water Supply Protection District. I don't see anything else here that is relevant right now, so, um, I'll turn out public comment. Please. Then again, just share your name and address once more for the record, as...
Kim Duffy, work from sunny nine F. So I've been sitting here for a while, so I've got a lot to listen to and think about, so. Um, so I just wanted to echo, like, with the information I have and understanding that not everything's a priority, um, and we need to, like, strategically move forward with our actions that we pursue, um, I agree with the decision to pursue that Aqua Fair Protection District and scenic road issues over the solar and battery storage. Um, you know, I think that the Aqua Fair Protection seems well-understood for the changes in the scenic road. We currently don't have any oversight on, um, you know, any of the things that are happening there. Um, so the battery and solar bylaws currently, um, currently exist or don't currently need to. We don't prohibit battery storage right now, so I don't think we're violating anything. Um, and I'm not sure if there's a state deadline for creating that bylaw. Um, so I'm not sure if that's kind of something else that's making us have this be a priority at the moment, um, but right now, I don't have a date, so I can't agree that it's a priority. Um, so I, I feel the risk to Lunenburg is greater at the time of a private company altering protected areas, uh, the scenic roads. Um, than proactively amending and creating a bylaw that might actually have an impact before we ever get, before we get to it, you know, within the next year or so. But that's just based on the information from this meeting, very limited scope, so I'm sorry, apologies if there's any misinformation, but just my opinion from sitting here for the last couple hours. Um, in terms of her, over-under for the, uh, master plan, I would personally really like to see movement on the survey results, um, and I'm looking forward to the next, uh, steps being taken at the public meeting. I feel like we have collected a lot of information, and, uh, I can't wait to see the analysis of the data and what we can do with it. So...
Great.
Thank you.
So first, thank you. Second, please, you never need to apologize for sitting at a meeting and sharing your public comment. Um, please. Uh, third, I should have been more clear at the start. Um, we're wicked open to public comment, so I didn't ask for a public comment, a lot of this out of habit. I'm gonna be real, if you're here and you wave your hand, I'm, unless it's like a really specific, super contentious thing where we have to be real formal, you're gonna get attention from the board, and we're gonna ask you to come up.
Okay.
Um, because that's, uh, that, this is a board that has tried hard to be as open as possible. Um, but thank you so much. Do you, is there anything you're looking for answers or thoughts back from us for, or do you just wanna share those thoughts?
Is there a date that the state has, like, mandated we create the storage bylaw?
So, the, the answer effectively is no, because peop- oversimplifying, because people can just do what they want until we do. That if we don't, if we're not, until we step forward and say, "Here's the, basically, here's the thoughtful, appropriate regulations that we're putting on this." Where it's the Wild West, and people can kind of do what they want. Is that over, I think, I know that's an oversimplification, but...
The way it stands right now, the building commissioner has determined that battery energy storage systems are not permitted at all. And the company said, "Nah, we disagree with you, and we're gonna appeal to ZBAA." Town council has basically said, "Hmm, you need a work solution here." And so until there's a bylaw in place, the likelihood is that somebody could pretty much do it wherever solar is allowed, without the board's review.
I heard mention that it would have to go through a different process to get approval, the Appeals, Zoning Board of Appeals?
So, what would happen, uh, because it's not allowed, um, they would, they, they go to the Zoning Board of Appeals and say, "But please let us." The state has indicated that the answer's going to, that by state law, the answer is going to eventually be, "Yes, they could do it where they want." Now, I don't know, uh, Ms. Harris could tell you the intricacies of if that means we could, the ZBAA could say no, and then there's a big expensive legal fight, and et cetera, so, yes, um, that we're very likely not going to win. Or we have the opportunity, right now, to put together, um, a bylaw that does give us reasonable jurisdiction, uh, not jurisdiction, that gives us the ability to reasonably regulate. Um, what I would add for that is, uh, obviously, I've learned a whole lot about this in the past couple weeks than I ever thought I would need to. Um, and the short answer is that, sorry. These are, overall, delightfully safe devices that do produce some things like noise, um, not a huge amount, but kind of the equivalent of industrial air conditioners. And, um, so these are things that can be put in thoughtfully, and would be best served by the community having some say in how that's done, rather than them being able to be put up right next to a bunch of residences. Um, the company that came forward and is looking to do this is happy. I have to speak real plainly. Golly do I find it sketch anytime a business wants to work with government. Okay? Like, I'm just, I'm just gonna be real frank, that scares the dickens out of me. Okay? Because government's role is to protect people, business's role is to make money. They're different jobs. Um, understanding, again, I come from, that I come from that angle. So far, they have been very forthright about, um, well, 'cause they're the ones who say, "Yeah, it's, it's kinda loud. You need some sound buffer. You need this, otherwise people wouldn't be happy." We seem to be, the people who've come to us seem to want to be... seem to want to be good business citizens of the town rather than aggressive. Now, I believe that is true so long as we're also looking to be good partners. I think if we slam it down and say no, well, then they have legal right to pursue it anyway and there's writing on the wall that that won't work out for us.
So why are we saying no? It doesn't sound like it's an official bylaw for us to not allow it. I don't see why we can say no.
The, under zoning, if the use is not specified as permitted, it's deemed prohibited.
Okay.
But way the state has interpreted state law is, it has to be treated the same as solar generating and that is allowed un, under chapter 48 Mass., section 3 Master in Law, as, has to be allowed subject to reasonable regulation. So there's a matter of interpretation whether it's allowed, not allowed. So far, we're positioned as not allowed right now. But in order to avoid a likely litigation issue, let's see if we can come up with something that reasonably addresses the issue and makes everybody walk away in a fairly smiling, smile face on the, on the face.
Are there baseline state regulations that we could fall back on?
No. But what we do have is a number of communities have adopted the, the bylaws and I've collected several from different parts of the state. Uh, there's a model regulation that the Regional Plant Agency developed and I've got theirs, I have some issues with theirs. But, um, we've also have had an opportunity to talk with the folks there and talk with the fire chief and police chief and we have an idea from their perspective, issues that they, they want to see addressed. And very frankly, some of the issues they want to see addressed, I don't see addressed sufficiently in some of the other bylaws. And I think that's been very helpful, uh, with coming up with a way of how to address their issue while also recognizing the issues and maybe treating somewhat a confidential manner because, for instance, if you have a security system, you don't want to broadcast that out to the world what the security system is. Uh, you want to be careful about how that's done. Because some people will manipulate that and for not good reasons. So I, I think it's been helpful. And I think with the, with the drafts I've seen, other communities input we've had, I, it's reasonable to come up with a draft in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, I mean, if there's time to do it, I mean, I'd agree it's important to do. But, um, you know, everything can't be a priority. Unfortunately, some things have to wait. But I do see the importance of it, you know, with this new information. So thank you. Is there, so if it doesn't get done by this May, is that like essentially deferring it till next spring town meeting? Or like, could we do it after?
We could do it for special town meeting in the fall. We could do it for next spring. We could do it for any time there's a town meeting. The challenge is that, uh, I believe the, the implic, in a completely non-threatening, just discussing business way, I believe that the, the potential applicant will, or the applicant, because they're that far, will move forward with what their legally, what their legal right is to do, which is to continue with the ZBA and go from there. So we would lose the ability to have regulation. I, I believe we would likely lose ability to have regulation on this one coming forward. If I was gonna be frank, I think they're really looking to do it right regardless. But our definition of right and their definition of right may not fully overlap. And I think they would be a better citizen than others might choose to be in this circumstance. But I'd rather we could all be on the same page. And if I'm gonna be, really, if I'm gonna put all my cards on the table, I think it's, personally, I view it as important that Lunenburg show we are receptive to business needs where appropriate. And that's a different, I don't mean that as we should just be giving business Lucy Goosey go free. But personally, I, I think there's value in the town showing businesses that are trying to come to us that a willingness to work with them in a way that is mutually beneficial. Because that also prevents situations where we get steamrolled.
When it would go through the ZBA, would they be able to, like, put stipulations on the approval or is it like an all or nothing?
They are being asked, bas, the building commissioner has made a ruling that's prohibited. They're being asked to overrule him. So they're, they shouldn't be putting conditions on because they're being asked that one question. Is it allowed or not allowed? And that's, they should say yes or no.
And then that's where the business part comes in.
If they may further answer that. So they basically make a determination if, if it, if it is allowed use and that's the end of their deal, then it comes back to planning board and we get to go through our non-existent bylaw and try to permit this thing that we thought it was not.
Basically means they end up getting the permit as they submit.
Pretty much.
How long does that process take? Because maybe when it all is said and done, it could come to the fall and we'd have a bylaw. I don't know how long it takes.
Biggest concern business, most business, businesses have is unpredictability. Time is the most expensive cost for them. And if they have predictability and they know that in the fall, yes, this is gonna be adopted and it's not gonna take their turn generally six months to prove it, that's one thing. If they look at it and say, but we don't know if it's gonna be there, I wouldn't expect them to wait. I'd expect them to say, we need to go forward. Uh, that's, that's a judgment call they had to make, but I would expect based upon the importance of time and predictability, if I were in their shoes, I'd say, we worked with you, but now it's time for us to proceed.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, like, if they still, regardless of, you know, if they just proceeded to go to the zoning board of appeals, then that still just might take time whether or not they acted on it immediately. I'm just pointing out there that we might have more time than we might seem to have. But that's just a guess, so.
Fair.
Yeah. What is the company that wants to add these?
The applicant is?
They haven't actually applied yet.
Oh, they haven't?
No. That they asked for a zoning certificate, I think it is, where the building commissioner advises, advises what you need to do to apply and to get approval. And he said, it's not permitted, so for, he can't, there's no, there's currently no avenue by which you can get approval. And so they appealed that decision.
So the name of the company will be listed on the zoning board of appeals announcement of the meeting?
Which they have requ, the applicant has requested, based on the discussion we had, a continuation of that to May. So give us time to develop bylaw and see what town meeting does.
Yeah, okay. Regina, rock and a hard place?
Yep.
That's pretty common.
We, we are often that way and sometimes, like the solar canopy bylaw, we're kind of a pleasant rock in the hard place that if we can work fast enough, we're gonna be able to help people make use of funds for better the environment. Sometimes we're in, I wouldn't call this one the bad rock in a hard place is because at least we're working with people that want to work with us. There's times that we find that we have to accommodate people who are actively not happy to work with us. So, but yes, that's the reason for the push. But delightful questions. Sincerely, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for volunteering for your board.
Thank you.
I would, any other public comment? Seeing none. Board comment concerns, um, ah, golly, Ms. Aubrey.
Yes.
It is my understanding that you are looking to turn traitor and go across the street. Is that correct?
That is correct.
The planning board is, will be, uh, this week, losing the full-time services of Ms. Aubrey as, I, I don't know how, if you wanna, or if you want to talk about your new role at all, but I just want to say.
Yeah, I mean, it should be on for the select board tomorrow, so it should be already on the agenda, but be the executive assistant to the town manager and select board as of Wednesday.
So, um, I believe I speak for the board, but I won't stop them from saying their own nice things when I turn to you and say, we didn't get long enough with you because you're awesome. Thank you for your work on the board and your dedication. I've worked closely with you in the past months and, uh, you are a loss, your departure is a loss for this committee, but nevertheless, a gain for the town.
Thank you so much. It's been a joy. That sounded sarcastic, but it was genuine.
No, I, I believe it. Thank you. All right, any other board comment? All right, I just want to remind board members as well, um, let me, if there's something you want on the agenda before a meeting, let me know. So we can get it on the agenda for a meeting, um, for discussion or anything else. That said, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, Mr. Willsner?
Aye.
Ms. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
And an aye from myself. Lunenburg, thank you for joining us. Engage in the master planning process, engage in your government. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Good night, everybody.